I took it down.
What? I wasn't here last week. Yeah. We've been having problems with, we set up accounts, you know, mailing accounts for each one.
Yeah.
And they're not supposed to be the same, you know, everybody's supposed to be the same, but we had some problems a couple of weeks ago with them too. So I'll have to make sure Christie's list is the same.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so if she sends it out, maybe for some reason. I don't know, it should be the same, but I'll check.
Yeah, oh, that's all good.
Yes. We go on our trip. Oh gee, this is, this is gonna be gone for like a week, so he's just like, ew, how is the lawn gonna get mowed? And I was like, well, I'm not, oh, and so I don't know. Figure it out before you go. I know I want to eat something. Yep. Yes. It must have been. And I wonder if they have some of ours too.
I know.
And it was on her head.
So how I.
Last year's daughter. Well, do I have to get married? I don't know. I think it's a daughter, daughter son of one of his children. Luke would be there. Oh, what's the birth rate? Birth rate pretty big again, look here.
Yeah. It's almost there. There it is. There. Let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under indivisible. Thank you. Public discussion. Anybody have anything for public discussion? Seeing none. Secondary road foreman, I think will be up here in a minute. We could have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. For July fifth, twenty twenty-two, an approved minutes for the penny change to rig dollar rate from twenty-three oh eight to twenty-three oh nine. Due to a typing error, do I have such a motion?
So move.
Second.
I'll second it.
Second by law. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the July first special meeting of twenty twenty-two? With the amended? So motion but class, I'll second that motion. Any discussion on the amendment and correction? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, motion carried. You can move them right up in front so they can talk into the whole team, you know. You guys are up. Anything new and interesting around the county? You were on vacation last week, so.
Kind of started.
So far that gold mix is open up.
Yeah, that's surprising, I did not think that would do what it's doing.
Yeah.
Must start graphic design yet, but.
A lot of compliments on it.
That's, I'm glad it's doing that.
So they're gonna grind that real today, tomorrow?
Yes, they should be doing it right now.
You said what, they're just gonna seal it outwards?
Pardon me?
They're just gonna seal it outwards?
Yeah, they'll, same as seal is what they call it. And then we'll have to see, we might have to go down and paint, painters are just moving in, so. See how it all goes.
When they gonna start the blacktop and by, uh, Westlake?
That, uh, we have a pre-construction conference the first week of August, so a little more than.
Doug, for that agreement we did across the railroad tracks for those four crossings, would that be something that we'll pave over this year yet, or?
Yeah, I'm hoping in the next four to six weeks, yes. Um, the contractor has got to get railroad insurance for that, and they're in the process to blacktop services.
Do we have anything planned for that? Spot on eight forty-two by the Union Service where the pipe goes through, where the road is pretty rough. The south side would be the worst, but.
Where it raises up north, just down the.
Where, where the pipe goes through, right in the middle of the.
Exactly, it raises, it raises up north of all of that.
Ain't much you can do.
I.
I know what the hell you could do for it.
Yeah, I don't know. If that's on our slurry list, uh, we don't have any patching there.
Yeah.
We'll have to look into that. That's, you're talking the cross pipe right to the west of the Union Service office.
Yes.
On eight forty.
Eight forty-two.
It's been that way for twenty years.
Yeah, right, sometimes it don't go down as far, other, you, some years, other years, it goes down almost flat. It can get up, so be pretty good hope that it raises.
He's got to get Jim's hole filled out the field or tile.
We haven't got it fixed yet, but it's all located, I'm ready to do it, but. It's, wasn't as good as what they said it is. It's rare.
How's it going, like Bill in Irvington Road, low grade now? So Rasmussen, you know, the Irvington Road with all those houses, and you guys are sapping in front of them. You see where he grades, he goes up over, if he drops, he goes up over.
Yeah, it's.
It's pretty smooth how he does it, though.
Yeah, he just, he just rather real slow when you pull up, so you don't need to. But yeah, though, it's definitely increased traffic on it, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah.
We've had, with other areas, we had to blade through some of those dust control areas. When we do blade through them, we're finding that it doesn't necessarily make the dust control ineffective. So it stays there, but if for some reason, because of traffic, we have to blade through there, we blade through and. We'll evaluate everything, and if we have to come back and spray again, we'll get that taken care of, so. Try to keep you informed of it, Dan, in case you get some, uh, get some questions on it. With the increased traffic, it's just natural that we may end up having to blade through this area.
The only rough spot on that road is that curb by shares.
Yeah.
Yeah. But you gotta slow down anyway, I mean, otherwise it will slow you down.
It's where you're accelerating, decelerating. Classic washboard. Effects.
So you did Cadiz into, uh, or did they spray it themselves?
Well, they had it sprayed, and then we put on another, another, and a little bit longer than we. Yeah. Like the, no, on the inside, just a little bit, so. And then we keep, you know, whole shower drain, that, that activates it, which helps, you know.
We didn't get much yesterday down there.
No.
Wouldn't even attend from their age, yeah. Just enough to keep in the house.
That much for that stuff that will bring about, we should have from the bottom.
Do we have any idea on timeline on the big six bridge?
Uh, they poured their last foundation yesterday, and they are hoping to pour bridge deck by the end of this month. So after that, um, couple of weeks cure time and stripping. I can build them a lot faster in the office than I can in the field, but, uh. You know, the, once that deck's born, then it'll be getting ready.
They're accepting pylons in Irvington already, are they?
No, they are driving their sheet pile for their copper dam.
Okay, I was wondering, I could hear them beating on something yesterday, it sounded like they were driving something.
Those would be the sheet pile, getting that copper dam built. And they thought they would have that copper dam building yesterday, so I don't know if they're pumping water today or not. Get to the bottom so they can start that foundation.
It's been a good summer and no high water.
The high water's been low. Yes. Every now and then, get a rain up north and. Three inches here or there, you know, at least it's a couple of square miles and we're getting those three inches and not the whole calendar.
Are they keeping that wind road up to your snuff or not?
What's that?
Wind road, or they keep that, but I haven't.
Yeah, I, I was out there the end of last week, Doug Crouch was on it yesterday, he didn't say anything about that. I went up north to the lead yard project and drove a bunch of roads up there, just to see how everything's going there. That's going well as well. So I, I think things are going well.
Don't they gonna start bringing stuff down?
Uh, they are stripping down north of your mom's there.
Yes, seen this.
Is that north or, yeah, that's north of your mom's, they're stripping, so, um, they'll start getting that, those entrances to those towers down there, work their way northwest. So that's kind of the plan, then they'll get their foundations after they get those roads.
They see they brought the concrete from that end.
Is it? I, I wasn't down there, so.
Is there a Saturday already?
Okay.
They got, still gonna bring piles of product in, but they.
Oh, sure.
They got the machines set up.
Yeah. I, there. I'd say a few weeks, I think they want to pour, start pouring concrete at the end of July.
So that one on the highway, Munson's, on the over sex blacktop, do they have to go back to that back quarter because of that front one too close to the federal ground?
Uh, I mean, that's the way the final development plan was, so, um.
I don't know if it's federal ground or what, because they got two quarters there inside the side.
Yeah, I, I don't know, um, again, that final development plan was approved that way, and that's the way it is, so. At the time, I don't recall others.
Like, because they're working on that one Saturday, and that back eighty of Munson's, they're putting those ropes in Saturday.
Yeah.
Nothing else, thank you, guys.
Very good, thanks.
Good, thanks, yours.
Monthly update, this is regional, who gets to do it today?
We're both gonna do it, we'll tag you.
You're gonna tag team it?
It's nice to be here, so thank you for that. You know, I just got back from vacation, and we took our grandchildren with us, and we went to Florida. And, uh, one, yeah, it was nice, it was very, very fun, and when we got back to Elgona, uh, we stopped at Casey's so the kids could run in and use the restroom. And when they came back out, they were saying, this is the best vacation we ever had, and they're six and eight. The best vacation we ever had. And except, except for last year when we went to the pumpkin patch at Bodys. And that time we stayed in the American here at Elgona and used the pool. And so it just goes to show what great things we got here in Sioux County, and, you know, it's no secret that Sioux County is a good place, and I was supposed to come back home, even from a vacation, so. Best vacation we ever had, except, except for what's right in our own backyard, right? And that brings to mind EMS, so one of the things that we did on our vacation is we spent a lot of time on the interstate naturally. And so when you think about interstate traffic, usually it moves along pretty quickly, but we were at a dead stop many times, more than three, less than five. I, I don't remember, three, four, five times, but, but many times for over an hour each time at a dead stop, waiting for EMS, uh, to arrive for accidents and, and to take care of people. You know, that had been injured or even died in accidents presumably, and we have great EMS personnel right here in Sioux County. And we're pretty excited, you know, about the work that you're doing to assure that EMS becomes an essential service to, you know, as far, as far as that goes. You're very able with that, and I know some of these are actively involved in the commission that's currently meeting, so I appreciate your work on that, that is an important thing. And you don't realize until you get into the pockets of the country that really don't have good service, you know, with that point. One of the things we're working on at the hospital is improving our security, and we're improving it through a variety of ways, but one of those is hop access. And there was a period of time that we had isolated, um, limited access, use of a keypad instead of an app. To get into certain locations of the facility, especially. There it is. And we've recently had some circumstances that have caused us to pawn. And we have. That does affect emergency medical services, uh, they do have the badge pop to get in, but you're always on the call when you're responding. And so we're looking for an alternative way to ensure that those folks can get it. So, once we turn it off for the, for the organization, we'll be. It's an important measure for us, we're also looking at Alice training. Surprised, but it's had the headline, you know, shootings in schools and even hospitals. The thing we're working on is location for ship, so the senior health insurance program. It's a very significant volunteer service through the organization, and we currently have three, four actually, very active volunteers. And three of those four volunteers in that program are retiring at the end of this year, it's a full-time gig for a volunteer job. You know, so, and it's full-time during the later months of the calendar year, every year, and that's sporadic throughout the year. You know, as people come onto Medicare, gain Medicare eligibility, but these are the volunteers who work with our community members to help them select especially Medicare programs and drug programs. For eligibility, what is in there for Medicare, so it's a really significant issue. And their training, as well as the scheme provides training too, but they're training a couple of volunteers to help support that service, and so we have this. I would say unusual crunch for space, uh, because a program that currently is using four volunteers will temporarily move to six. And so try busting at the seams in the most places throughout the organization, and of course, we want it to be handicap accessible. As they come through, as, as patients come in for that, so. I remember working on yesterday, it was. Allocate some temporary additional space for that. We also just recently, a couple of weeks ago, replaced all of our inpatient beds, and that's a really significant, it's a big deal. Our old beds were not really that old in terms of the scheme of things, but they were probably a good fifteen years old, and these new beds. Not bequeathed to our population, that's a big item. We're working on that. Facility, one of the things that we've found over time is that wallpaper really can't be easily cleaned or sanitized, and in fact, when we do scrub it on a routine basis, uh, it just starts to peel. And so it's looking a little bit trashy from that standpoint, so we've got to crew in, doing some wallpaper removal. They started on the third floor, which is our inpatient unit, and that has temporarily closed some of our beds, so it's reduced our bed capacity. So on a general basis, we're bursting at the seams with all of our beds falling early. And part of that's because right now we have fewer beds used with the wallpaper project, so. Uh, that is, I think, coming to completion on the third floor, that'll move to the clinic. I know that Cheryl's been able to work with Donna, and I appreciate your call, uh, because we were very, uh, we were very quick to be able to respond to that request to get it onsite here. I'm exactly sure of the date, but I think it's September first, what's the morning hours, thank you, and, uh, so, um, that'll be coming up for your employee bonus. And, uh, so we've had a couple celebrations recently at the health center, and we're pretty loud and proud about these celebrations, by the way. One is, you know, of course, we've made top twenty critical access hospitals in the nation, and that is for the second year in a row, that's a really big deal. Top one hundred is a very big deal, so we were top one hundred for the third year in a row, and then at the top one hundred, it became top one. You know, so as they look at the data, and that's the chartist group, this is the independent group, so we're excited about that. And then secondly, our hospice staff, uh, received notification that we were named by Healthcare First as one of the top hospices for patient satisfaction in the country. So that's a really big deal as well. And that obviously is to the, through the, um, surveying of the family members in close, close contacts and the hospice patients. Uh, collect, go through the finances, anything else?
Uh, we, we do plan to come out ahead of our bu- bu-. Budget this year pretty significantly due to the large part of the, with being, being our inpatient ball volumes that we saw in. In the first half of the year. We did do a budget amendment last month for fiscal year twenty twenty-two with a large piece of that being due to the cat. Capital projects that we took on, one being, one being the wallpaper removal, with that being. But funded by, um, some of the COVID grants that we got this last November. And then a piece of the budget amendment being due to the, um, in, in pair, impair, impairments that we had. Due to the fire that, that we had back in, in May, so. With that, we have all learned a lot more about insurance that we. Everyone would like to know, so that has been great to get to work with, to get to work with Jim Black and. And his team as we, as we work through that.
I'm gonna just interject on that too, if there's ever a reason to shop locally, this is it. You know, who would ever think that the unthinkable would happen, that we have a fire of that magnitude, or that we never have a fire? You don't think heavens that it didn't affect our hospital, um, didn't affect our patients, but it did affect our maintenance shed and all of our vehicles, a lawn care, just no removal, I mean, just everything. Plus all the storage items we had in there, not to mention our clothes. And having local agent, having local coverage is a really big deal, you know, we called them, he was there with him like. That night, you know, and started really just taking a whole lot of pictures, which was incredibly helpful at the end, you know, because I think we're just all so stunned and just watching everything that. You know, burn up, you know, we got a few stamp shots, but our stamp shots were like far away of the smoke coming out of the building and the fire and the lights, and not the.
And, and then, uh, just the, just last, I was gonna cut over some of the projects that we have going on, so. So, so one being the wallpaper removal on our third floor for inpatient control. And then redoing, um, the flooring for our clin- clinics as well, and, and, and this is all. Fund, funded by our, our COVID grants that we received, um, and then, and then the last one being an internal project that we're doing on, on, on our own. Down in our bay, down, down in our. Basement to, um, create a pediatric program for occupational therapy and stage there. Therapy, so, so, so that got put on hold a, a bit because all of the drywall was in the shed at it as well, but. We're working to get that, get that project completed, and we're really excited to get that going out, so. Questions, do you have of us?
You're doing a good job with the metrics.
Go, go, going good, yeah, it was, it's definitely this, the first six months. Of the year is really what's been driving this year, I mean, we have pretty significant wage increases that just had to. Occur in January, doing the same here, and, um. occur in January, doing the same here in July. I mean, that's really helped our staffing too. We are looking out for an ad tech, but that's really the biggest staffing gap that we have right now. We're very lucky and, and I definitely think it's due to us being pretty aggressive with our pay.
I was just going to ask on the month of April, it seemed like there must have been some pretty big income wise or whatever.
Yeah. So, so there was, so we file a cost, a cost free, free report every year. And there is a lot of amendments that we've had to, to do to fix some things. So when those get set, set, settled, they pay you just one large lump sum. So I think in the month of April, we had like a 300,000,000 cost report set, set settlement. And the same thing occurred in May too, because right now we have fiscal year 2021. Opened up. So it's really prior year revenue that we're just getting paid now. So, yeah. It makes us look good though, for those months, but yeah.
Definitely does.
It really affected us that way, the branch as well.
Yeah.
First part of August. And part of that will be to cover the, all the grant funds. It's called a single audit, it'll show all the grant funds that we received. And we believe that's how really pretty good records for those. And so there should be these prices.
And I'm sure Tammy will be enjoying that same D light here soon too. Luckily, I used to perform though, so.
Well, it actually used to be a little on it or for Medicare at the hospital.
So we should be prepared for that.
I think we're very well prepared. She was just telling me this morning, don't even need to come onsite or site.
That's good.
I think for yesterday, sent a spreadsheet to help us get it prior to them coming. So that's very helpful.
That is helpful, yes. Very much so. Any questions?
Any other questions?
Have a lovely day.
Thank you, Dan.
Make sure you get the pumpkin patch this fall. It's the best vacation ever. See you guys.
Yep. Thanks. Tammy, would you like to introduce our newest employee?
That's what she likes to come up. As you guys, I'm sure you can stand up for a second. As you guys all know, she misses her captain and leaving as effective Thursday. So first, if we could give June a round of applause for you, we missed Friday. But we have hired her, he's up now. He's going to take June's place. We have very few to know, but we have enough that he can do it. She is working with you today, tomorrow, Thursday. And then Will and Ron will take her under their wings and show her we'd like to get her approved for hire today and have a chance for you guys to ask her any questions if you'd like her, for her to ask any questions. She wants to. Do you guys know?
Just welcome.
So this is the board of next meeting.
Thank you. I would make the motion to approve the new hire, Beth. Do I have a second? Second by Casey, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Most, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Discussion on staffing event for October 10th.
I'll keep that brief. If they just kind of mentioned with the hospital, they're also talking some training. Our workman's comp audit was last spring or last fall, excuse me. And one of the recommendations was training for all staff for distracted driving and footprints and falls. Our safety committee meets tomorrow. They've been talking about trying to come up with just an annual day. Suggestion was October 10th. It's Columbus Day, tends to have less traffic in the turnhouse at that time. But we're kind of thinking is similar tracks to like technology Thursday, seven to nine, 11 to one, three to five, something like that. Just to go over a few topics, I guess I just wanted your input if you can go forward with that or if you think that's okay. I contacted Bill Dickie, who's a representative for IMWCA, to see if he can provide some of that training. There'll probably be more learning videos. I know the sheriff's office, he had talked about distracted driving. So just some in-house training, just to get everybody covered. Does she have any thoughts?
Any thoughts on the board?
And I know Alice has been brought up too, but also maybe something on de-escalating, just how to de-escalate if somebody's angry. But I haven't found anybody yet that is willing to do that. That's a few of the topic ideas. We're not really set, but before we can keep on going forward, you guys are going to nix it. So I'm spending any time on it.
It's a good idea.
We'll talk about it more tomorrow. At the safety meeting. Okay. Sounds like we're on track. Yep. Thanks, Don. We got it listed that way. So do I have a motion to approve staff training event for October 10th? Motion by law, second by second flat. Any more discussion?
Oh, I had a decision.
Okay. We'll just on the flat. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Both, motion carried unanimously.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
That's all right. We are up to the discussion for funding request from the city of Algonna for law enforcement, community liaison position. Who's the chief from the city? We can all come up here.
As we just brought up at the last meeting, the request, city's making us the board reconsider the $70,000 previously tabled help support the law enforcement community liaison position. We secured funding for the current fiscal year of 2023. See, Algonna's allocated $75,000 of ARPA funding. And then the balance of that $70,000, the county were to approve it. Those three funding sources would provide us the funding to have fully staffed the position and its cost of operations through the end of calendar year 2024. The rest of the group can probably speak more than, better than I can to the actual need and how this position would work and the services that that provides and the importance of it.
We were granted by Care Connections, granted $124,000 to start this endeavor for the first year. And this would be a person who would work with the sheriff's department and the police department. They did accompany officers, assess by the officers to what level of violence to the situation and quickly observe situation. Help to de-escalate, connect individuals with community resources and provide ongoing support and wraparound services. This person would not be the counselor or would not provide therapy, but they would help with law enforcement to connect to the resources and help the individual build up the skills, the resources they need for their life. Not only for mental health, but we would probably be addressing alternative populations, domestic violence, people with dual diagnosis, substance abuse. And things also, you know, in terms of crisis. So as we start this endeavor, one important thing is we will be collecting data on all calls to determine how much time is spent on the calls, what resources are required, where they're directed. So we will have information at the end of those two years to determine where the, where the dollars are gone and how much time is saved by law enforcement. We're not having to respond to those people who are coming through the, the cycle over and over again.
Yeah. Part of this would be, you know, I think a lot of people have heard the word jail diversion, helping, you know, the people are going to jail a lot. And this is hopefully part of helping that. Having them involved upfront and then the follow through, you know, the first crisis someone has, a lot of times that's not something you can help. That's, that's going to happen, especially if you don't have any knowledge of that person. But it's the follow-ups and it continues. On our line of work, and I know the sheriff's office as well, we have repeat calls and it continues over and over. And our goal with this, part of the goal of this position is getting that person involved, having some follow-up with them, kind of sticking with them some. And just to try and help that. So, you know, what most people don't understand is when we have that first call, there's either one to two officers and or deputies that are on that call for sometimes multiple hours, then around to the hospital for, I mean, hours on end, sitting there waiting for the diagnosis. Then if they're going to try and find a bed, a lot of times we can't find a bed. Then if, if they did something that was to the level of a crime, now there's nowhere to go. We then say, well, I guess the only option is at this point, let's move forward with the charge because that might be our only option. That's the only way to keep them in a safe place, which ultimately isn't fixing any problem. Now we're moving over to the county jails, you know, and we're now using jail staff. And we're, I mean, the resources just go on and on of what we're doing. And our goal is to, some of this is to get some stats and start working on that. And in time, hopefully seeing some of that stuff go down and getting, helping this person, you know, helping get the help that these people need. And that person hopefully can get the stats and working forward through that.
They've had success in other communities?
Yes. It's, you know, there are more and more communities working on this right now. I know in Des Moines area, there's a few that I really
Des Moines, Waki area just established one. In major cities, they have partnerships that they have partnerships with established institutions that say, have those resources. Where ours is a little bit different is we're a rural area, so we don't have like a standing mental health provider institution, you know, that we have people that can partner with the law enforcement officers. So ours is a little bit different in that way. However, we do have, this person will connect with all of the resources in the area, in the district to provide, to help find the right services for each individual.
One little thing, you know, and I know last time we were in here, you did mention, I believe it's you, Raj, that you mentioned there are other funding. Part of this position, but it all takes time, you can't just jump in, is this position, once we fill it, which we are filling it. I mean, is the goal is to, that person will also have, be looking for more resources to help fund it in the future. But we want to make sure we can secure it for, you know, enough time to get everyone in place.
So sitting on the Care Connections board, you know, that's things we're trying to make better is, is the mobile crisis, is that not working as good as you think it should be? Plus, you know, we're, we're contracted the company that's supposed to find beds within an hour.
It's, we're kind of on the periphery of that. We will still use that, but this person will be doing the work to find that rather than the law enforcement officer. That's what this person will be doing, connecting with the services, connecting with people with Care Connections rather than the law enforcement personnel doing that.
Well, the mobile crisis, as they call them, and then they're supposed to respond within an hour.
Yeah. And at this point, an hour is, that's a little, with this size of county, it's a little unreasonable. But no, they're, they're still responding. They're getting, a lot of times it's a little after, a little over, but no, they are still responding. But that is all, part of that is all 100% volunteer. They can, I mean, if they say no, we won't take it. You know, our goal is even in the crisis, if they say, and mobile crisis cannot go into a hospital. They can't, I mean, if they have to go there, they cannot do any of that. That, that is still part of stuff that is not, I mean, other areas will still be getting utilized, but this will be helping with the staff behind the scenes with this. And there's a lot of other areas with that to be a part of it. And most of them, mobile crisis, it's, I think, best case scenario, they, they can be a part of there for, I think it's one month. Is their staffing, and then they're not a part of it where, I mean, these, these people aren't, you know, when this happens, it's not like after a month, they're all better. They're just, at that point, their caseload changes and they move to different people. Or we could continue that follow-up with that person.
So let's say you take a patient to the hospital and, and you say they're not violent. And then this person can consent with them instead of an officer, why they're getting evaluated and then waiting to find
As long as, part of that, as long as there's no, yeah, not to violence, obviously violence, we're going to be there for sure. Part of that is to hope that, you know, some of that offset that and be there for them to help out when we're, when that works out. I, I think it's important to also understand that the reason I'm involved, this is that we need to build partnerships because it doesn't matter if it happens at the city limits of Algonna or out in our rural community, we're all going to be dealing with it. As Bo stated, if it's a situation that emergency services determines that it's not a emergency hospitalization, then we as law enforcement, all right, are we going to pursue a criminal charge? Or do we need to find different alternatives? I've got a young man sitting in our jail right now that legally probably shouldn't be in jail, but there's no services for him and we're having trouble locating it. So a position like this will help us on both sides of the street, not only mental health, but law enforcement to coordinate those services like mobile crisis. Mobile crisis has improved and I think it's a great asset, but they have criteria, they won't respond to certain situations. They won't come to the scene in certain situations. They won't come to the hospital in certain situations. So we're trying to develop a position that will be that in-between person. Because unfortunately, I'm not an expert on this, but mental health is falling out of law enforcement more than anywhere else, in my, in my opinion. And we are the ones that get called and the other services have to be coordinated to help. And I think what this person is going to be crucial in is when we have someone brought in and maybe they either get this 48-hour hold for emergency or the five to seven day hold, it's when they come back is where it lacks the services. All of a sudden, that person's back in our community and there's no one there to, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no one there to connect the dots for them. So they're not a repeat offender. So they're not, we're not dealing with them again in another two weeks or a month. Because they haven't, they haven't, well, where do I get my medication? Where do I, who do I talk to for this? And mobile crisis is good for that, but not during the first phase of it when they can't respond to go to certain criteria.
That person will build, will be a guide to help the, you know, to help connect with the resources because the threshold is kind of a little too high for them to reach if come out of dealing with the mental health crisis. Come out and dealing with the mental health crisis. They're not as strong as they might have been at one point in time, they targeted to figure things out. So the more we can help that person get stronger in their own life. And make those decisions, then they have a better chance of, of creating their stability. Within the community. And I think that you made an important point is that our default is to. Follow the criminal route. Can't do that anymore, because it's not helping the individual, and it's certainly not solving the problem. So we've gotta look at something that is an alternative to help people become strong members of the community.
And I don't know if you know, Eddie, like, so one of the core services, you know, that we're, that state says we have to do is a twenty-three hour observation center. And, and Spencer Hospital right now is getting ramped up to do that, so.
I'm hoping that once they did that, that they become contagious, and then hope the other places.
But it all takes money.
Yeah, it does, but that is, that's the great service.
We have noticed improvement on locating beds faster. That's, seems like in the last few months, it's gotten better.
Humboldt also has built mental health weight from their hospital.
Comes down to the point this is cost effective.
And that's, that's the data that will show that for the first two years, as we were, are going to keep precise data. To show that. Where officer time is not spent repeatedly with the same problem, the same person, and not getting any results.
That's with, you know, doing a pilot program, having, you know, at least a, a two-year timeframe to get the program running and, and collect that data. And then we can, you know, as the city and the county, do an analysis after that, determine, okay, is there, is there cost saves? Is this a position that is, you know, we should continue funding, or, you know, it was a good effort and ultimately it's, we're not gonna pursue it. Or, you know, go a different direction. I also know, you know, it's focused on this, you know, the law enforcement side and talking with Phil Albers. On the EMS side of things that, you know, there's likely some cost savings and benefits. Because, you know, I'm more familiar with EMS calls, but there are a lot of calls that we get to households and individuals where they're. They're repeat calls and they're for things that probably aren't an emergency, but if they have someone that was following up with them on. Are you going to your appointments? Are you getting your medications? Hey, how are you doing? You know, get ahead of it, being proactive as opposed to waiting until they feel like they're in crisis and calling nine-one-one. And then all the resources that takes.
I guess one question I had was, is there anything that's been worked on with this as far as like a contract or a twenty-eighty agreement? Something to have legal core structure behind this partnership? Or is it more just the numbers and?
I think that would come after you okayed it, we'd have to have a twenty-eighty.
I mean, like, the, the money that was received, like, the grant that we applied for was Elgona and Kusuth County. I mean, it wasn't just Elgona and, you know, we talked about, it was for both, both entities, like, the whole county, this was for. And it wasn't individually to just us, and we're trying to hope you guys will join, you're part of that first twenty-eight thousand.
And that where we get to the joint funding with the city and county, that those funds wouldn't actually be spent until, you know, July one of twenty twenty-three. You know, so it'd be the next fiscal year, if it's first year, and just operate under the grant, but certainly before we get to that state, we'd have to have that formal twenty-eighty in place.
So like, on your grant application, it, it was for one full-time and one part-time, but this just be one full-time position? And not in no part-time, because that was maybe a hang-up that the committee had, was they didn't think it should be one full-time and one part-time.
No, and part of looking at that was, you know, you have that full-time, then we just, we're looking at, people have to have time off, you know? And you can't call them every single night, you know, if we have that call, and that was the, kind of the top thought of looking at that. Is do we look at, you know, having that help when needed, you know, some person can have time off, but yeah. At that point, this is what we're looking at.
To, to that point, how are you gonna handle somebody that gets called out at night a lot? Are you gonna pay them overtime or?
Uh, no, this would be, uh, part of that, we would, again, being pilot, no, not overtime, it is a set salary. Say in a couple of weeks, you know, maybe their hours are getting higher, maybe some office hours change. We have to do, you know, we kind of talked about like an on-call time of, you know, maybe in the office, you're there thirty hours. And you have ten hours of on-call. We kind of start seeing maybe how some of that changes, but most of it will probably be during. But it is just a set salary.
They're gonna furnish a car and insurance and everything else?
But they're actually gonna be a city employee, correct?
Yes, that's what I said.
They're gonna be on your insurance?
Yep.
What's the chances of the committee okaying it again, honey?
I mean, there's gonna be more money next year, but, I mean, we don't know exactly the dollar amount or who's, or, you know, like this. This year we had four million dollars apply, had a million dollars to grant out.
Struggle with grants, we never, they come and go.
Yep.
Any other concerns from the board?
What, what, how much money do we have left for America Fund?
I think we have a couple of projects that we have up till. So with that, I think we're at about a little over a hundred thousand.
Does that include the fair?
No, that does not include the fair.
Such a choice, you're gonna support the fair with the Arctic Funds or this? Any more discussion?
So from the discussion before with the twenty-eighty or whatever, that would be something we would work on. Before the start of the funding here for the year two, have it in place at that point.
And, and I imagine we kind of want to get something in place before then just to formalize the, the structure. Because it will be a, a city of employment, but the, you know, complete intent is that's a person that they're gonna be pivoting between, you know, the county. For the, you know, the sheriff's office and the city.
So who's gonna be the report? Gonna report to you, Bo?
So they'll, they'll, uh, they'll technically report directly to Bo, um, just, you know, because they're city employed. But again, is that gonna be in, in close coordination with the sheriff's office?
Like, I don't expect that person to have to come talk to me, to walk over to their office, talk to that, that. I mean, that is something, when they have a need, that phone call's gonna be made to that person. And that person at that point will be responding and handling that. That, that's not, you know. I guess that hasn't been something Roger and I had to discuss, but I, once that person's in place, I, I see that person being that. You know, they're working wherever they need me at the time.
And we kind of sound similar to how, you know, the dispatch works for their city employees, what county might service. But by no means are we supposed to need to be a city employee if it makes sense to be a county employee.
They have to report to.
That's what I was just gonna say, is I might be speaking out of turn, but I kind of look at this position similar to our communications officers. They're city employees, but they service the entire county, and we pay a share of that budget. So I, I, I should see that this might be something that the county could look at, that we would incorporate into that part of our. Be agreed that we already have assistance with our communications officers, because I think right now we pay thirty-eight percent of that budget.
Well, and, and that was one question I had on here, is forty-eight percent county, fifty-two percent city. Did those numbers come from anywhere in particular, or just trying to have a little hobby around the city as?
Right now, right now, the city, it's about sixty-two, thirty-eight, isn't it?
Well, so.
For dispatch, yes.
Yeah, so when we looked at, okay, what would, you know, year two and three, or year two and part of year three, look at for operations? We came out with this going to be right at about a hundred and forty-five thousand. So since, you know, the previous request had been for seventy thousand dollars, we respected and stuck with that request. So just asking for that seventy, and then so that to get to that whole number at the city, we put seventy-five.
That's what that fifty-two, forty-eight is.
Yeah, 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 right now it's fifty-two, forty-eight.
And that was also the other thing we talked about after that, hopefully two and a half years early looking at that. Is part of all the stats that we're doing is looking at the fact that maybe this is a position where. There is a lot more happening with the city of Elgona, and that, that has to be looked at as percentages. Or maybe it's the other way, maybe the person happens to be doing a lot more on the county side, where there may, it's a fifty-five county and forty. Just, that's, that's all part of the stats and looking at all that and the timing and how. If we believe it's cost effective, moving forward.
You know, seventy percent of the time is just, you know, on city of Elgona activities, I would expect in the future, then that we would pay seventy percent.
Any concerns on the board? Every time we create a new position, you know, it just goes right onto the tax base in the end. That's all my concern.
I think you need to, you know, look at it from, you know, this is gonna be a pilot project. This is something that we have the opportunity to be a leader on in the rural setting, because it is more difficult to coordinate these services, we don't have the large institutions in town. And, you know, by having the funding in there for this year one startup of setting up a, a data tracking system. You know, what we believe will happen is the data, data will show that, you know, yeah, this position costs money. But overall, between the cost to the city and the county on law enforcement and EMS, but there's an ultimate cost savings. But if the data, you know, doesn't show that out well, you know, then, you know, we run the pilot project and, you know, we can make that determination. But just looking at, you know, the, the amount of time and effort, and let alone just the outcomes on the individual side of things. And, you know, value to them, them being more productive and involved, you know, member of our community. We can make that determination, ultimately it's saving money, I think.
So this person would do, like, is there a lot of paperwork involved in?
There would be a lot of behind-the-scenes.
And this person would be able to do all that?
I will be, I will be up.
I would make the motion to approve seventy thousand for the city of Elgona from the Arctic Funds.
We've, we've got an app to grant to the Arctic Forward, really, before we can approve it.
They already approved it.
I would second that.
That was back a while ago, but they did approve.
We're just making sure we're doing it in the right order.
Absolutely.
Any more discussion?
I mean, I would just like to say, you know, the Care Connection, because we, you know, the grant's for a hundred twenty-four thousand, we kind of wanna see it, the numbers also. You know, so I think it's a good pilot program, we'll see how it comes out. If it don't work out, I guess. Be a two and a half year pilot project.
Any more discussion? Eric, do a little follow-up, please?
Second.
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Lots?
Yes.
Plats?
Yes.
Jerks?
No. Motion taken, forty-one. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jacob, can you contact me on something about how the bunch of?
Okay.
Doug's gonna talk to somebody.
Do you want to take a ten-minute break? Take a ten-minute break while Doug is watching that official?
Why is it outside?
Yes. Go far. Probably. Go right away.
Probably agree.
I'm asking for the rest of the agenda. Yeah, we have stuff with our engineer, just most of it's weekly stuff. Then draining jet ten, bid letting for D sixty, and setting the accumulation. Hearing date for drain eighty-two, cleanout project.
The city of Oregon is not letting them feed. Much to my dismay. We're not supposed to have chicken feed, but they're fine to do it.
That, does that your property, I mean, your property animal burn?
Uh, well, we've got a, we've got some farm ground, but nothing that you want to eat.
Trying to find a solution for this.
Someday I'd like to be in the.
Got no sheep problem.
Yeah, well, we kind of, we live on the very edge of town, so it's. Yeah, I mean, the church is our neighbor on one side, and the country is our neighbor on the other, so it's, it's, it's still. In town enough that the city moved myself, but, but, I don't know, isolated enough that it's kind of nice.
Well, see, I would do is I would go get it and then apologize. You know what?
Well, we're not have, we're not supposed to have any livestock of any kind to pet, no farm animals in town. But, well, just our, our city man just got a, a horse.
Oh, wow.
His daughter, and all that.
See, see, we got the price of gas versus the price of, I mean, free, free grass to eat.
Yeah, I don't think, I think the price of a horse is more than your gas.
Price of a horse, I don't want a sheep.
Oh, yeah.
The price of gas for a lot more, gotta take that consideration. Small, small town living.
But anyway, well.
You too? It's cooler here than at my house, so.
Yeah, it is kind of, it's almost chilly in here.
I'm a long ways from chilly, but.
Well, I hope we don't have mercury in our house, so.
I don't have mine on, but I have a good shade tree. Windows are open.
We have, we have a window, you know, but I have to put it in the bedroom, so at least it's cool at night.
Yeah, the basement, honestly, is actually pretty cool regardless.
Yeah.
As long as the dehumidifier's on. It's, um, it's, it's a little. I'm ready for December to apply.
No, because then, then our house has no insulation either, so it's, it's, uh.
It will be.
Uses a lot of heat, almost, it's a big two-story brick house.
Yeah.
Back in the day when they built it, I mean, I've got a thin black insulation board, hardboard, they all. I don't know. So we're open to insulate the house, either later this fall or next spring, but, yeah. Always big projects.
Always projects.
Yeah.
Houses, buildings.
I know, I know. Trying to remodel another house in town. I know, well, that's like.
I know we talked, the last time I saw you, you said you were a teacher. Or president?
I wasn't.
Okay. But. Really? Also, they were, they were trying to.
It was true.
What are they asking? Well, I have a feeling before a lot of my artists. I live here for the same reason, basically, people are. All of a sudden, yeah. If you were to sit there, you know, I talked to different. County, these guys in town, I told them, I said, well, you've been to several. I said, there was somebody else that was working a lot of times when you lived here. I said, last year she said she was a teacher or something. I don't know, all the time, it's just.
So you've been here for the, I mean, the D V teams.
Well, we're just. Well, we were.
You weren't here last.
No. This is great, yes. Well, I, something came up. And she was like. Just, just, just you. Well, when I walked in, I was like, oh, my gosh, oh, you're like, oh, crap, no, no. What's that? Well, yeah, that's pretty good enough. Well, yeah, I mean, it was just, I mean, you know, I, I don't know everybody's similar or political whatever, but it's like, you're a part of the, you need to be going and whatever corruption you think is up there, it starts, it all starts down here, so it's, there's, I mean, well, if you like, you know, I know you've been quite a lot of different things, it's like, yeah, they're not here. Not gonna, and then you can't, you can't be mad because you're not doing anything about it.
It's interesting helping people have contact with. Correctives, have an issue. Shabbat. So be present. I know it's hard because during the day, we're working, it's hard to get it, that's like they need to do.
Live or, you know, like four o'clock, four o'clock afternoon type thing when everybody can, or more people could be, ti- typically.
Yeah, it's set up to, um.
Yes. Oh. I used to, I used to, I used to sell aerial photos and I talked to several people, not even in Iowa, so then I say, yeah, they have the meetings when they have it because the rest of us at work, you can't get there.
And he said, I remember the one website or something. Sure. Reluctant by those people.
Uh, uh, well, and it. Yeah, but more people don't get proud about it. And you choose her, so. And, and, you know, that goes.
People contacted about you taking this stuff. Should, you should call them. That question's. I think I've been good change. It's for my personal interest right now and collecting data and. I'm gonna decide.
I, yeah, I would tell them, well, you need to show up for my subject income and do the same thing. I mean, they all have devices. I mean, I don't, I couldn't write that out of my mind, but, um, right now it's just a matter of being your children. But, you know, like.
Like, put that out there, that's important. Oh. County's disappeared.
What's that?
He used to count me in all one week, then the next week he gave it, it was just an empty box, and now this week the box is gonna. One person's value there.
Yeah. I can only imagine.
Can't make this stuff up, it's good fun.
I can only imagine, yeah.
It's good fun when they, when they hit. The feathers rustle. And she was talking about maybe to de-escalation for people. Couple people there that can use that because they just. Start acting back again.
Yeah. I, I almost got into it. I can't even hear. And, uh, so, don't give me a bunch of bread. I, you know.
I don't ask questions very about the answer, but I don't know the answer to. Just let it out, you're a television.
Yeah, that, I mean, I wasn't, I mean, that, that whole, that whole grant thing, one that threw out the numbers and figures, it's like, oh, my God, what do you have? Well, and then, I mean, you know, you bring an engineer out for how much, just tell you how to do it rich, and I'm no engineer, but I can do the aims to get.
That's my code, if a project is so much money they have.
Well, but, but who, but who? Well, yeah, let me.
That was should be given, and they kind of found that out last, that two weeks ago. But then what did they do?
Sure. It seemed like that was.
Wouldn't have unless somebody pushed the issue. But the same thing happened at that D eight.
Oh. About what?
The D eight. They have the same issue. Same conversation as the one in the. Just like cattle appreciation. Cattle appreciation.
Today's not appreciation day.
Yeah, you're supposed to eat chicken.
Oh.
I, I think you got that wrong.
Whatever.
That's what they told me in the office, that.
I, I'd appreciate cows like these days.
Yeah, that's what I said too, we're supposed to appreciate what we get, that's why we appreciate.
Yeah. No. Really? I don't remember Roftler's ever farming there, that was always, uh, litai. And I went to the man, he wanted. Yeah, Roftler's farm is solid. Okay, yeah, all right, yeah, sure. Yeah, I don't know what they're doing there, because that's, that's odd to go to training show. You go to drainage hearings and they want the landowners to do all the determination and then help you manage dorm, you're doing determination and he's not a landlord.
Yeah, it's okay.
So I got to call into them, see what's going on.
Well, the funny thing was, um, that poem I didn't see because it kind of listed it all, it was only.
Right, I know. So any, I got to call into them.
Okay.
See what's going on there.
Okay.
What happened there?
Oh, they already got a letter from U S D A that at dorm, like, rebuttal in the area, and the ground at the county. So, uh, that's looking into it.
I mean, it. He was asking about highly erodible and combat that was not.
Yeah.
So I don't know what he was thinking, if he was gonna try to enroll it in something, which I wouldn't think that he'd be able to do.
I wouldn't though either, but.
So.
Does it?
So you know the island's on?
Oh, thank you.
I can fix those computers, I take them out and drive over them.
You're supposed to take that gold chip out of them, get rich out of it.
Do they go in the burning barrel?
And dig the gold out?
Yeah. Here you go, Roger, you want this? Nineteen seventy-five Fiat Alice sixty-five for sale, road grader? That'd be good. We, we owned Alice.
Doug, do you need any of yours at all?
There's three road graders, you need any for the company?
We had, we had a, a Davy Crockett, they called him, you, you missed out on that, Doug. It had a fourteen-foot blade and it was an Alice Chalmers with a WD forty-five gas engine in it. Are you ready, Doug?
Whenever you are, yes.
We're ready. Construction running right away.
Construction on the road right away, there is an electronic file in your folder. Uh, the first, uh, request is from Winnebago Co-op Telecom Association. Uh, this is up to the east of Lead Yard on four hundred sixtieth street. Uh, they are providing communication to the substation of the Lead Yard wind farm. Uh, we can go in the road right away from their pedestal over to the driveway where the substation's being constructed. I would recommend that the board approve of this.
Oops. One dead chair.
I got it hooked on my, hooked on my heel.
I would move to approve, but I have a second.
I second it.
Any discussion on the project? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, she carried. Thank you, Doug.
Uh, the next request is from Alliance Energy, uh, Alliance Energy is going to place some, uh, overhead lines underground, and this is mainly for crane walks, again, up at the Lead Yard, uh, wind energy project, again, I would, I would, uh, recommend that the board would approve of this uh, request as well.
Motion to approve?
I don't know what you.
I have a second. Second, second by class, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimously.
And then we have a request from Iowa Lakes Electric Cooperative. Uh, they are removing a overhead over Ninetieth Avenue up in section eight, nine, Harrison, uh, and replacing that with a underground, uh, speeded Jared Preston's building site, I recommend the board approve this as well.
Do I have motion to approve?
So.
Motion by.
Dixie.
Second by.
Deck.
Decker. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimously.
All right, I guess it's a bit true. Let's bring Simon Roger.
Swan? Paper clip. And this is a risk coverage sheet, uh, for the Hancock. Uh, it's the Montag Farm, we share crop with Nielsen on that, so we need to sign that there. Older operator, whatever we are with that.
Want to tell the rest?
I will get the rest, yeah, I will, thank you.
Step back a little bit, there musters. East side, you go down that mud road. There used to be quite a bit more back there. I think it takes more gravel.
All right, um, second thing on the agenda with me, uh, proof of resolution for the transfer funds, uh, from the operating to the equipment fund, I included in your folder a balance sheet showing how we closed out the fiscal year. Uh, our operating balance ended with, uh, in, an audit, ending auditor's balance of two hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars, thirty-two cents. We started off the beginning of the year with two hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars, ninety-four cents. So, uh, we continue to operate up there, uh, having more revenue than the expense, which is good. Our post closure is, uh, ended with five hundred twenty-five, eight oh eight, thirty, and we went over that uh, recently with the post closure analysis. And there is no need to transfer any money out of our operating fund from to post closure. And then our equipment fund, we did purchase, uh, a loader, and that was a hundred sixty-eight thousand, sixty dollars, fifty-eight cents. And we ended up with, uh, ending balance of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. The second sheet there kind of shows, uh, lists the inventory of our equipment. And how I tried to figure out how much money we should have to replace that equipment. And I do it based on how many hours the equipment has and how many hours I would expect it to, uh, have when we sell that equipment. To make a long story short, you can kind of go through there, for example, the survey truck, uh, January one of twenty twenty-two, we had, uh, three thousand hours on it, uh, eighty-nine thousand miles, it's actually nine years old. I would expect that, uh, we shouldn't be able to get ten thousand hours on it, two hundred fifty thousand miles. We put about four hundred fifty hours per year on it and about ten thousand miles per year, so I would expect that we could have a life of twenty-two years. Uh, based on the hours, twenty-five years based on the miles. Um, I would estimate that we should be able to get twenty-five years out of it, we still have sixteen years. Uh, the cost of it, I, I, uh, have a thirty percent increase over every year that it's been purchased. So I would say that we're gonna have about a hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars to replace that, which is, uh, six thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars per year, based on the nine years that we've had it, that comes up to be six thou- sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty dollars that we should have in the fund. If you multiply everything, or excuse me. If you multiply everything, or excuse me, add everything up, we really should have about a hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred four dollars. That's my figure. Um, but I would recommend that the board would put thirty thousand dollars. We do not anticipate any expenditures for equipment. That will put us up to a fund balance of eighty-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars, forty-two cents. And I do have a resolution similar to, um, resolutions that we have completed this time of year last year. I'll read it if the board would like me to. Otherwise, this is kind of our standard, um, operating to transfer some money out of operation and get it into more or less a savings account for our, our equipment. So that we, uh, continue to have funds up there to operate.
Your number would be oh seven, twelve, twenty-two, oh one?
Thank you.
I'd move to approve, uh, the transfer of funds.
Mr. Plast moves to approve resolution oh seven, twelve, twenty-two, oh one. Do I have a second? I'll second his motion. Any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none. Do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously.
Roger, if you guys decide that, please. For me, and would you just, uh, process that? Thank you. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, discussion points, uh. First, we do have an employee that tests positive for COVID. So your road department, we're going through the uh, COVID protocol that were given to us in January, and I'm also checking with, uh, H R as far as some of the new recommendations to make sure that our, our flow chart is correct. Uh, farm leases, I would like to discuss that just a little bit. I included, um, a file there. It's named gravel pit farm lease info. It has the locations of all the, um, all the farms, or excuse me, that, that one has the rent. The Cassoot County gravel pits renters is of, has where all the farms are located. Uh, the reason I'd like to do this, our leases end this year. And if you're going to terminate a lease, we need to do it by September one. Uh, in the past, we've just renewed them. If people, if the tenant, if the tenants want to, we've renewed them. We've also had the tenants come in and visit with the board, talk about, uh, talk about the farm, some of the prop, some of the efforts that they make to, to farm them. We can do whatever you guys would like to do, I guess. So, uh, if you want to just review this information, we could talk about it again next week. But it will give us some time. If we do decide to terminate everything, we'll have time to do it. So it's more or less an informational type thing today, but asking that you kind of, uh, think about it a little bit. And next week we can discuss it some more.
I think the prices ain't the same, like for Irvington Pit and McGuire Pit, ground, that much difference between the north and the south? Because I say the north, well, they picked a lot of gravel sometimes.
Yeah, they both have a lot of gravel. Um, I think on both of those, we happen to advertise for renters.
Just like the ones from, uh, Palo Alto then? Because there's a difference just for hay ground there?
Uh, that hay ground has been for as long as I can remember, has been the same, um, same tenant. The Zittle Pit there did go to Don Hagan. It was a kid via one time, and I can't remember all, but Bill Depew's been, had that hay ground forever. Blackwin has had that hay ground also. It's, it's just over time. That's the way it's been.
Yeah, I was, I was just wondering why it wasn't like the same price?
Uh, also just want to make the board aware. The legislature passed, uh, House File twenty-one thirty, and the governor signed. That was a ATV bill. And I don't know if we need to take action on our ATV bill. I know this legislation requires operators to be eighteen. And I think they're supposed to also have, uh, liability insurance. I think our, our ordinance says sixteen. So I don't know if you need to visit with Todd and take appropriate action or how it all works.
I would think that the state law would supersede our law, but I'm not certain.
Yeah, I, I don't know. It might just be something for the discussion meeting with Todd. So.
Do you want to make a note of that?
And then there was Senate File twenty-three seventy-six, and I included both of those in your, uh, folder. Twenty-three seventy-six is about an all-system permit. And there's a couple of things, um, that is concerning to county engineers on that. One being it increases maximum load, uh, anything by twelve percent. Um, so we don't know if we're gonna have to reanalyze all of our bridges based on that loading. It could. And then the other one is by twenty twenty-five, we are supposed to, uh, all counties are supposed to comply with what's called an all-system permit. Uh, that all-system permit has been around for quite some time, but we have opted out of participating in that. Uh, part of it is because some years ago, fifteen years ago or so, we were, we found out that, uh, our bridges that were uh, posted was not, they were not being forwarded to the people that are getting the all-system permit. There was some sort of a lack of communication. Um, so we, we just opted, just stay away from it, not let it, uh, issue anything there. Come to our office. Yeah, now they're saying that by twenty twenty-five, we're supposed to be participating along with all the other ninety-eight counties. Uh, there is a lot of things in that bill that are that need to, there's questions that need to be answered. So you're starting to list, the Iowa DOT is starting to list as well. Especially with the increase, twelve percent increase on, on loading. Patching, we are continuing to, uh, work on patching around the county. Got a couple of places corded out, just waiting for blacktop service end to come in and, uh, get their work done. Uh, roadside spraying, they completed the broadcast spraying last week, uh, which was south of Highway eighteen. Now there's spot sprays, thistles between Highway eighteen and Bancroft Forest City. If you know of thistle patches, uh, call up Lisa every Friday. We set the list to B and W for them to spray.
What, uh, what part of the county did they do for thistles?
They're doing the middle portion from Highway eighteen north here, uh, Bancroft Forest City Road, eight forty-two, uh, east west. Uh, project up the big six elevator, we talked about that a little bit earlier. They should be there in depth, we hope by the end of this month. So that's moving along well. The Fairville Road, that painting, they're supposed to be painting in August. Right now it is ahead of schedule. They have all of their material placed. Their subbase, so people can drive on a negative portion of that road, but, uh, it's not paved yet. The Irvington Bridge, they, they're building a copper dam, gonna be, uh, constructing the west substructure there. Uh, one sixty-nine bridge, I was up there yesterday, um. They have all their substructures in, but they can't get their beams until August, so that's gonna be kind of sitting still for a little while. It's a beam bridge. So they're at, uh, they're sitting a little bit. They got a couple of contract items to do, but other than that, they're waiting for beams. And resurfacing, um, Highway eighteen, they are using our detour, and I think through this week they'll be finished up and they'll be back, uh, just having traffic on Highway eighteen. It won't be on our detour anymore.
So like on that, why is the road closed? We have to run in a pilot car?
That's a good question. I haven't been over. Maybe they're not using our detour anymore.
No, it's, the detour signs are still up. But you can go through the road close sign and there's a pilot car on the, on the curb to the R fourteen.
They're stopping you at R fourteen with the pilot car?
I think so.
I don't know why.
I've spent a few days since I've been through there, but.
Yeah, now it's completely closed.
Yeah.
Completely torched.
Right.
You can't, you know.
Yeah.
Then you can't get here anymore.
Well, it, it's east of me, so I can get here fine, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, because it closes.
So, okay, were they running a pilot car when you were going on the highway then? They were, but I know a couple of days they were. Which didn't make any sense.
I don't know, I don't know why they would have been doing that. My understanding is that they had the, they were replacing some cross pipes or replacing a cross pipe and it was gonna just take some time.
Really increased the traffic going through Wesley.
Well, the, the official detours.
I know. Right.
Well, Wesley probably enjoys that, don't they? The people, the towns, they used to complain when they had to bypass that traffic wasn't going through town anymore, or not. Now they got.
Because sometimes they're turning off seventeen and coming through Wesley and then getting, taking the old highway out.
Taking the old highway, yeah. They figure out how to do that, don't they?
Yeah.
And you think that just keep on going to McGregor, go over Sexton.
Right, yeah.
Unless you're going up to Titanca, that's.
Golden, uh, golden chickens, am I?
Well, some of them.
Are they? They figured that out.
Must be all cornered up. Emptied.
Uh, Lead Yard Wind Power, they are starting to get bases up there, put up. So you're gonna be down there and you see a little, like they got two, three, four, five, I think they got six of them, uh, that the bases are up. Continuing on that. Cassoot Wind Energy, they're doing roads and they're getting their access roads graded. We talked about that a little bit earlier. Our road department is putting a new front on the Lead Yard building. They just about have the materials on that. They'll be talking and then they're moving to Fenton to do that, the front of that building. So the road crew is doing a little bit of work there. And then down on B fifty-eight, they are supposed to be working today, Galen. So.
Supposed to be.
Supposed to be working. I haven't had a confirmation of that yet, but, uh, they're supposed to be doing that work to do that, take care of that smoothness.
The other day, I was on Bob and Trish's road again, just, just to pick up and I could feel it.
Oh, yeah?
There's that little bump on, uh, east side.
Okay. And then traffic market moved in yesterday, so the north part of the county is, it's center lines. And the north half is getting center line, the north third is getting edge line, and the north half is getting symbols. There. Excuse me, they're working. Other than that, um, I, the county engineers do have a mid-year conference. Um, and I have an executive board, a farm market review board this afternoon, so I will be taking off. And I'm gonna be gone tomorrow and Thursday for that. But I will have my cell phone if anything comes up.
That Irvington Road, right, right north of Irvington?
Yes, the Apple Road.
Yeah, that, uh, east ditch. Do you want me to call B and W? There's a lot of trees, good sized trees growing right in there right away. Or do you want to wait till he comes around when it's that time for him to come up front of the, like the woods?
I'll have to see where they're at. At one time, Galen, when we graded that road, do you remember when we graded that road?
Oh.
We, conservation and the road department tried to plant natives in that.
Oh, okay.
Do you remember that?
There's a sign up I thought a mile up that says, no spraying native.
Yeah.
Native something.
Let me drive down there and take a look at it. I'll keep talking.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just noticed there's a lot of.
Is it poplars or willows or can you tell?
Two will or cottons.
Cottonwood? Okay.
Don't take much for cottonwood, girl.
No, it doesn't. And we need to get them taken care of. So, uh, it's just a matter of whether we want to spray or whether we want to just go in there, cut them all out. I'll look into it.
Alright, thank you.
You may.
Doug, I forgot to mention when the foremen were up this morning and stuff, but I think it was Friday, I was on River Road, the gravel portion north of the town.
Right.
Uh, and there was ripples in there, like.
Washboards?
Yeah, washboards. I couldn't even keep the truck going straight and I was under twenty mile an hour. It was just bouncing so bad.
Um, I think that got maintained yesterday. About, uh, we were out maintaining and retaining it, so. I'll, I'll, uh, make sure that.
Yeah, because it, it could have been before that, but it might be taken care of that.
Yeah.
Just thought to mention that.
That gets some heavier traffic every now and then. Those curves, again, people break and accelerate, just a difficult one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion for Doug?
Very good.
Yep, have a good trip.
Thanks, Doug. Thank you.
We got some. You see that, the email we got, the family yesterday, and that pipeline? If we don't make some rules, that they, they get to make their own rules with that pipeline.
I saw, I saw that one too, Galen.
I sent it to you guys yesterday.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I, I believe you guys have every right to have your procedures. And I wasn't sure if that was, they're talking about tile, that was private drainage tile. But that, that's something that's gonna have to ask. Somebody's gotta live there.
I thought we were gonna hear that one time. They were telling us that whatever our rules are, they had to follow our rules, and others saying that they don't have to. If I read them, right?
I, I want to read it again, but I, I understand your concern. And I, I, there's parts of the code that say you as trustees.
They have to follow.
That they have to follow. I mean, they got, so. I, I'm not an attorney or anything, but I know that's why that procedures was put together. Because of transmission lines that were going through and the drainage district, and I'd say it's right there in the drainage code.
Sounds like they're a little concerned about if you read that, the revised thing, no rock over three inches. It's, it's pretty small rock.
Yeah.
You get a lot of rock piles out there.
Alright. Pretty good.
Yeah, thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. Thank you. You guys have a good afternoon.
Yeah, we got wait till ten o'clock.
Down late, Dean, reading about thirty-four.
Eighteen, reading about thirty-four. Yes. Never. You can avoid it down. Yeah. Lucky bullshit.
Lucky bullshit. Seats up on the computer, somebody was asking one month ago, are they in vacation or they should, no, or is. Called it up, she used to go or something? No answer. Called Saturday, no answer. It's good food, I like it though.
Yeah, it is good.
I got really good, uh. No, yes. It's protected, I'll cook it.
Yeah, I don't.
It's kinda like fish.
I haven't heard that. But I have none of it.
By the hell, the period before Saturday, I'm double texting.
That's always a good thing.
It's a copy getting mad again. So you say, I'm curious if you see the email first that I lost you.
Yeah.
Done on Tuesday. Jackson last week, he said a lot of people ramping up on them. Wasn't Jack shot three times? Do you still have it?
Yeah.
I thought they said it was really ramping up a while back in China. That's where the markets were going.
Down China, yeah.
Yeah, markets were going down pretty hard.
We're never gonna get chips for cars.
It's only like this type of year. You can turn the heat seats on yourself. You really?
Yeah.
I wish I had those air conditioning seats.
We have the money. We don't have the chip for that either. We have to help out the car.
Air conditioning seats in Toyota.
It's terrible.
I never turned them on. But you can see, make it feel like you're wet or something.
You don't, you don't like the air conditioning seats?
What?
You don't like the air conditioning?
Not at all.
Uh, I don't know, I don't know that I can go without them now. I haven't been trying.
No, I don't like it at all. I don't like it. I could do without that.
They get so hot in the summer time though. Yeah, I. I always burn up in the black leather seats of my car. You guys all here to bid on sixty?
Yep.
We can't start till ten.
Oh, it's time?
We can't start. The agenda said ten, everything.
So.
I took February seventh, August, your, your chair.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. No, I've been running along. My face has been on both post office walls.
I remember.
Where?
She was, uh, started out.
Yep.
I just wanted to contribute, she was a big, big house owner.
What's your name?
James Dow.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just fixing the. The title bit, yeah.
You know, she'd been there back in two thousand. Eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Okay, yep.
My daughter won't say anything at that time. But probably better, but I hope, uh, the best of it. Yeah. No, so I, I just remember being wherever they are.
Okay. Said I've been, I've been, I've been visiting up here in all summer, just got done with that. And had a big, had a big adventure at Brick Street Theater, the last thing. You don't leave Sexton? Sexton. Looking forward to having her, her thing. Little label screen down the layer, or should she use a little label down the.
Um, so she lives just east of the school. A block. You know, her residence is, uh. Her shop, I believe.
Okay.
I'm not possibly gonna be able to be like. On that way. So he used to have restaurant. That rice thing.
I don't worry, it's my sister.
And then that whole side of, you know. At a hotel, I don't know if you go on, I don't even. I thought that it was the, uh, private chef or.
Oh, really? One system, dating system?
Some reason I was thinking he was private chef or.
Uh, um, just been three, just cast three, our show for Brick Street this spring, but then she fell over her dog. Her little ass. Rolled herself all, all up and then apparently recently. She wanted to die, then again. She ended up with both her knees, which she's walking in. Her part of the show this summer is basically we sit, listen to the same old talks, so. Now, are you third generation or second?
I'm second.
Second to the brothers?
You know, my dad, my dad and my uncle started.
So then. Are you the one that works down?
No, so that is a totally separate deal. That is.
That's part of the family?
Yeah, so Jared and Harvey started the rock exploration. And. Their family tents, there's five boys and five girls.
Really?
And so Warren. Back in the eighties. Yeah. Yeah.
This is another brother.
Yeah, and so Warren is the one who's got a name.
Ah, okay, and that was his son this week? Doing some last night's job?
He's got two sons that have two different names now.
Oh, really?
Cause they have actually one of his sons.
Okay.
Well, Cooley looks to Warren. Rocking sport, but then they also had a horse, you know.
I just guess. It wasn't so bad. Yeah, we're kind of like the same thing, Chuck Holland. He makes these, told us. And so I had to stay the over. Now, if I had to say this, wouldn't you think of them?
I don't.
Well, they're, I mean, why? Thirty years. Wesley. I also, so there's. Type generations.
Yeah.
Cause I have people all together. Yeah, ready? Called me yesterday, you can take it. Go here this morning, this fall. Where you're down in the fall. Where's it at?
It's clear about my next little border. Baltimore. Something like that, here in Dakota, um, North.
Well, yeah. So I know there, two guys out there. I like you, so. That's someone. That Jason, you know.
So my daughter's playing.
I've seen Lake Mills.
Yeah, so I've seen him.
Yeah, I saw you, well, I was at, I've seen, I've seen Lake Mills at Delmon. And when I had like. And, and. How they end up.
So we lost the sandal sprays.
Yes, last night I was heading in there. At a golf course for a fundraiser for. Brick Street. And, uh, the ball machine's going on.
Did he does that? Or they just, excuse me, off the. Well, it is free.
Well, they, uh, have, you know. It's, uh, the battery is busted. A left-hander. All, you know, part of it. And they got, they got a change. Boston, Boston. Close daughter, and she brought you.
Okay, so. Yeah, so the first time we played them. We were actually out on. You know, they started, they started the coaches' daughter's picture, that, and we were able to score off. We actually had the hook and had, and that's your floor heading. And they gained her, or they bossed them, they had.
Well, and they started hitting. I said. Teachers. It's like. They turned it all. Sweet, kind of, that's seven guys. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, I said. That's three. I think they're on the street dance. So what did you? Are you doing that, Matt, towards you? Yeah. That's supposed to be up a lot. Yeah, okay. They blow quite a lot. So. That's not too far. That's good. Kid your footwork at it. I got it. I. Oh, I got it, bro. I expected better. I was a big university. Been driving baseball. And they work out on that. Much more. They were probably more. I can imagine. You had eyes like a woman. People don't see that. Okay. They might develop bad tennis stuff. People have been very. Yeah. Yeah. People. This is kind of personal content. Why, you know, they really had to, didn't they? I would say you would like that, for now, anyway, I guess. That. Yes, it ever. I don't know. It's. He took me out the field. There's this indentation about this far down, stick that probe this far and I hit the tile. Thank you.
Yeah, the waterways are not. That one, I fixed one out here, southeast, south west of town, I'm sure.
Same side.
We had, actually, it did play, we had, I think that we had, we went under tile over. Under feet to the west.
Yeah, but that already covers slow ride.
So the back of tiles. Open, you stand right there, you go, walk up the top, you can see the water running through the tiles.
For this one, I did some.
Yeah.
This is a big, last bag of eleven thousand something for three point two acres, so he won't. They wanted to put the rain shelter. We're good, so.
Okay.
And the trees he's talking about, the elevator somehow went out and spread and killed all the day trees.
So.
So.
So I said, we didn't get it going until, said that end of July, but then we won. Uh, MacBook Pro, so I got that. That one. I watched. Bit bit, bit bit dies, can't get that to work. That was from the. I think I should be working.
No, I don't, but you should look.
I should just see what the case is.
I.
Yes.
Cause that was.
My, my.
Could do that on the spot.
Yes.
I.
The. Well, he had the.
Maybe I will. Yeah, I don't, I don't see it here, so we're fine that way. I just thought I'd catch you before you hit that one.
Okay.
It is ten o'clock and we will open the hearing for bid letting on DD sixty sub one. Oh, good luck. It is just a bid letting, sorry.
Yeah, it's not, not a game.
Well, good morning, everybody. We got a funny, uh, handout here that I'll pass out. Just, uh, for basic, for you guys to keep track of who's got what bid. Um. Quite a turnout for this thing, man. All right, um, I don't see any Landowners present. Is there anybody representing Landowners here? All right. Yeah, well, we'll go ahead and. To that. Thank you. All right. So without further ado, we'll go ahead and open up, uh, first bid I got here on the stack. So we're not, not gonna go in any particular order, just what I've got here. Uh, so the first one is Zach Ludenthal. And let's see. Looks like. I hope says cashier's check. That is in order. Okay, there are no addendums to this one today, so there's no need to acknowledge that on the bid form. See. Appears to be in order. The total for the bid is, uh, seven hundred thousands, seven hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred four dollars and twenty-five cents. Hold on, if I can just type these up here.
Seven, seven, two, three, oh, four.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm a little too covered, so. Did everybody get that number?
Yep.
See, and I did not leave a total at the bottom. That was tallied up, so you know, I'll go ahead and just read out the base bids here. So, uh, first base, the base bid is fifty, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Uh, one hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-five cents. That's five, five, seven, one, 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 point, seven, five. Alternate one is twenty-two thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars and zero cents. Alternate two is one hundred fifty thousand, sixty-six dollars and zero cents. And alternate three. Is forty-two thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. Again, for a total of seven hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred four dollars and twenty-five cents. Okay. Any questions on that? Any questions on that? Um, and just a reminder with the alternates, alternate one is for lateral one. Alternate two is for a combination of Minnesota lateral and lateral two. And then alternate three is for lateral three. We wanted to keep those as alternates in case the landowners wanted to drop any of those laterals for any particular reason. Uh, but the base bid is for the main tile. All right. Uh, the next one is for Rockness Brothers excavation out of Lake Mills, Iowa. Let's see. Go ahead and open up the bond. One appears to be in order. If something. It appears to be in order and it adds as following. Okay, the base bid is for six hundred fifty-one thousand, thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Alternate one is for thirty thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and zero cents. Alternate two is for two hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents. And then alternate three is for sixty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Everybody read that on the screen, okay?
What is that, ninety-five?
And what's the total of the end?
Yep, nine eighty-five, nine forty-nine, oh, two, five. Is that a little better?
There you go.
All right.
With the lights on it. Layers a little.
Oh, okay. All right. Next we'll do a rental excavation out of Bird, Iowa. They have bid bond. Bonds. Appears to be in order. That's good for them. All right. The base bid is for five hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred ten dollars and fifty cents. Alternate one is for twenty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars and zero cents. Alternate two is for one hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars, one hundred, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred six dollars. And alternate number three is for forty-four thousand, eighty-three dollars and fifty cents. And that is for a total of eight hundred and twenty-three dol-, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars and zero cents. Again, that's eight, two, three, five, nine, six, and zero cents. Okay, up next is pollen contracting out of Forest City, Iowa. So I have no, about the bond. Bond appears to be in order. Bid is in order and reads as follows. The base bid is for six hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars. Alternate one is for forty-four thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and zero cents. Alternate two is for three hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred eighty-one dollars and zero cents. And alternate three is for ninety-one thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars and zero cents. The total to. Uh, one million, one hundred eighteen thousand dollars, five hundred, one hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars and zero cents. Again, that's one million, one hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars. Okay, our last bid is from GM contracting out of Lake Crystal, Minnesota. Let's start with the bid on right. All right. It is here. It is in order.
Did you cut it? Right through.
All right.
You just need a secretary to help you.
GM contracting, where are they from?
Lake Crystal, Minnesota.
Contraining?
Yeah, contraining.
All right. We won't judge in two part hundreds spell. Oh, you got. Lubenthal. Interesting, dude.
Well, well, what's all? Apologize for that, Zach. All right.
It's spelled close enough.
All right. Uh, so the base bid from GM contracting is for six hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Alternate one is for thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. Alternate number two is for two hundred and twenty-four thousand, or excuse me, yeah, two hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and one cent. And alternate number three is for fifty-three thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars and ninety-seven, ninety-seven cents. Eight, seven, zero, seven. For a total bid of nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. Let's see. Looking at. The apparent low bidder is Zach Lubenthal for both the total bid and each of the alternates. With a total of seven hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred four dollars and twenty-five cents. All right. And to recap on our previous meetings, um, we wanted, we decided to go ahead and have a bid letting today and then have a follow-up meeting next week to, uh, give the, give the landowners a week to mill over the numbers and determine what their position is going to be on the entire project. Um, so I will work to get more contact with landowners to hit them. Their numbers so that they can. Make monetary decisions. Uh, any questions?
You can check your numbers over and make sure they're right.
Yep.
And we won't do anything until next week.
Thanks, everyone, for your answers.
And Dan, do you want to plug those numbers in for the landowners? We had talked and I'll get them.
Yeah. To plug these in.
I can take them away and go. We get. Feedback from the landowners. Have that in the record. Do you have anything else that you want in the record, Dan?
Not in particular. Uh, yeah, not until next week. Um, talked to Jim Hudson, who, uh, Marge, well, how did your conversation with him go today?
Basically, probably the same. They have, they talked to Doug. And his brother is the landlord. And. But if the numbers come in okay, they're willing to go forward with it and they're willing to pay their portion. And Jim Hudson is working on the agreement. After repairs later, of how that payment would go or what would be decided. So he'll have a draft possibly for us next week to go forward if the landowners want to go forward.
Yeah, and actually this should be, should be substantially lower than what they saw for numbers.
Um, yeah, I think because we're working off one point one, almost one point two, or like eight hundred total, so.
With the, with changing it from concrete on everything to plastic alternates for laterals, so that they should be happy about it, I think.
Yeah, I think they'll be, I think they'll be right in the neighborhood where we estimated originally. Um, you know, with my estimates I threw in a ten percent contingency factor. Um, I was looking at the numbers I did not have interest for next year until we start, um, actually loving the assessments. So when I factored those in, I did that this morning, it still came down to about the same number using my engineer's estimate. And the low bid is pretty close to the engineer's estimate, so I think this is the numbers that probably numbers like assume because they all seem to be. Pretty good numbers that we had. So I think we should be in pretty good shape, but that's, that's just based on what I've seen before. We, we've seen a lot of interesting stuff with this project so far.
As far as the Minnesota landowner, what he's going to have is not changing. His number, what he's gonna.
It's, it's gonna be pretty similar.
Um, well, we don't have an agreement there yet, so if he sees the bids are cheaper than what he had originally been told.
Yeah, but he didn't have the engineering fees in it. You don't have the interest in it. When you add all that up, it's gonna come close to what.
Yeah.
So I did, I did have engineering fees and I did have some interest. So it's all, it's all gonna be pretty close to spot on. Imagine it in the first place. Nice from, from a legal standpoint, a lot less arguing.
Yep.
And, and I'm sorry, but part of what changed was I added the interest, I added all the engineering fees and I decreased the contingency factor because we're a lot closer to knowing. It's actually, you know, things will of course change as we go into construction. So I left a little bit of contingency in there, but I bumped it down to five percent rather than ten percent what we had before.
I'd like to see Hudson's opinion and have that in the file before we make a decision. Because we're talking about interstate. Yep. And I think we better dial our i's and cross all our t's.
Join us and I'll be here next week and people will speak to some of that too, but.
And Jim Hudson currently is on quarantine because COVID, so he doesn't have. He didn't know if he would have something.
I hope he has something actually.
Yeah.
He was gonna try, but. That was part of the call. Phone call today.
Well, I think getting the bids where we got them today, I'll halt that process. I'll just. It'll make the discussion that much easier. Because we're not fighting the landowners to.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
I'll, uh, fill these numbers in here.
Sounds good. Mr. Wiedemeyer, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Nice to see so many bidders today.
That's good.
There are even a few that initially when I called and said, ah, I'm interested. And good for it's too.
Yeah.
Have you ever heard of GM before? I've never heard of them.
Uh, no, I, I haven't. They, they found us, we post all of our bids on Quest CD and then additionally the papers. And then also, you know, we've got our standard call list for local contractors. Um, and they found us online. That's it. Yeah, and I haven't worked with Zach Lubenthal. I'm maybe on a small project for, um, but it sounds like he's doing some projects right now with the county. You guys have had pretty good luck so far, so I'm like.
Yeah, he just did, uh, lateral on seventy-five earlier this year. Or last year, he was finished this year.
Isn't working on DD four now?
He's subcontracting on, yeah, dude.
Did, did Jim Hudson call in today?
No.
No.
He had mentioned to me if the landowners here, I don't get.
There wasn't any here, so.
Didn't, didn't have any, so.
I'll make sure the masks are good real quick here.
With that, we can go to DD eighty-two, putting out project Marge. Can he give you any idea when he wanted to do it?
I'll be a second.
I don't think I'll here. Doesn't matter, but I will be here either. Oh, you won't be here either. We might not have a meeting on the second. I might do the same thing.
Not having a fourth inning September thirteenth either because.
September fourteenth.
Try it in the next week. Yeah. Or is that too late?
No, I think that's not. He wasn't able to. I can check if it's been nice. And then we can reschedule.
Yeah, why don't we do it tonight to make sure that we got somebody here to run a meeting? Yeah, father, it'll be good, it'll be good. Chairman, vice chair, both minds kind of tentative, her daughter's fine, and we're, we're gonna meet her and call her at over
Oh.
Halfway.
Yeah, I'll mark it down, I'll, I guess I can, and it changes one day.
Okay.
What's the date for August?
None.
August ninth.
August ninth, yes.
You're gonna go on vacation?
Yeah, going to, well, say this, my good daughter and son, my five kids. Daniel Fisher, Drew. They could show Grandpa, he's had vacation, maybe those before.
Sometimes they do. I'll make a motion that we do it on August night at ten o'clock. Do I have a second? Second, but plan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. Post, post and carry. Time for a discussion with our auditor.
Okay. Next week. We have transfers, uh, continue to go in for eighty-six, seven, one. And so, four, one at ten, the other at eleven. And then, let's see, I received a letter from a notification from AEA asking for a special election we set on September thirteenth, uh, with two public measures. One, asking for the Algonia and Lebona School Districts to be merged. And the other one, uh, to adapt to revenue purpose statement for the state of Iowa Service on Advanced Vision Education Fund. So, they have provided me most of those public measures. So, we will, I guess, one public measure and the others that we do organization. So, we have set a special election for September thirteenth. So, uh, we'll be holding that as well. But I think Maureen Albert sent you guys all of it, thank you, Kurt, that I received this also. You guys ones provided, I can pass back along. We're working on taxes right now. Just doing that, our business year is done. Okay, the auditor firm will be here, you know, the end of July or early August, we start on our audit, they, Sarah did send me, like I mentioned earlier, a spreadsheet for CIPA tracking all clean events, all grants that we received including IPO. So, uh, we can start plugging those numbers, moving it from the spreadsheet created to that spreadsheet to help back on again. So, that, that's helpful. Can't think of this. I sent you guys, where would you guys email, from Bobby, who, you know, about their picnic. You guys all get that.
August first? Something, sometime in August. Or is it in July?
Let's see if we
About the air, so sweet corny, four piddies or something like that.
Yeah.
I hunted under a refrigerator.
Uh, nineteen.
August ninth, June, July ninth.
Yep, July nineteenth, five thirty.
Yeah.
Where's that?
Fair enough.
It was just a long, I actually, I actually
So, and then, next week, I'll I'll be asking you guys for our student fees for the county line breakfast.
So, I'd say just go ahead and hang on to that.
From Marge, our group.
Yeah, um, what I was told
For KC, DC.
If you want.
Which is centered on this third.
So, we should something
Roger, we're glad we hear you. So, next week, think about that, August third is the county line breakfast, I'll be asking you guys next week for our student breakfast.
There's a seventeen here out there.
And that's in Whittamore, it's in at seven o'clock. Okay.
So, we're good?
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And do you have all that tallied up for the, what's the individual ones will have? Individual landowners? You want to get, if you want to do it now or later, it doesn't matter, but I'll get it from you sometime today.
Yeah, we'll get you that today.
Perfect, thanks.
Alright, thanks a lot.
See ya.
And that's all I have.
Kyle, were you getting any board reports?
I didn't have any meetings this week. Normal stuff.
You going to Clarion?
Um, not sure, I told, I think the guy called a couple of times and I said, sign me up, but I didn't know for sure if I'd go.
It looks to the summit, I mean, or
Yes, for the summit. Mr. Casey, do you have any more to report?
I went over to Whittamore, checked out Mossback's field. His trees, they sprayed it somewhere already, so the trees were dead and he, I only probed about six inches and the man was right underneath, it's busted. So, I got all right, so I told him that, they said he fixed it in that area once before, so he kind of knew where it was. And I come in last week one day and I talked to Luke Snyder. He punched up that, uh, hog site that Jack keeps reminding me on the Gears's. I haven't talked to Gears yet, but if you look at the map or what, how he's got on his petometry, he's got he held his finger where the original site was, and that's where the pit was. Well, they tore the pit out, tore the buildings out, put two brand new buildings in. And where the drowned out spot is, is right where the pit is, the old pit. I think it's just a actual water castle, yeah.
Yeah.
Is what I'm thinking, because he held it, that's exactly just perfect. And you can see where the crops, the last picture they took, how the crops were all brown and dying. He thought maybe they had too much clay on top or it's, it's compacted so tight and I'll have to talk to Mr. Gears yet, but I don't think they got a legitimate claim, it's just, there was a pit there one time.
Yeah, okay.
Which, like I said, that's nice with his computer, he just punches in now and before and boom, it's right there. Mr. Gloss, did I have any extra meetings last week?
Jack?
No, Mr. Meyer, Jim's partying retirement this Thursday.
This, yeah.
Two to three thirty and give him money.
Three thirty?
Yep.
Election Center?
Yep, Election Center, thank you, Jack, for that.
I had ambulance meeting last night in Bancroft and we talked to the Bancroft and Sway City MS crew. Uh, if they had any ideas better than what we've been planning so far and they didn't. They're all worried about the volunteers dropping off. My, my big concern is if they have a if we do pass it and we make it an essential service and they start taxing it to full rate, it's still not enough dollars to make a ambulance service that's available for the whole county. It's the way it is. Don't have any other ideas unless you guys come up with some good ideas. It's still going to be the best that we can afford. As good as we can do. And tonight, we're gonna have a meeting with, uh, Algonia Ambulance and it'll be Whittamore, Wesley, south part of the county. And anybody else that wants to come? That's about all that I've got. Anything else to come before the good of Cassuth County today? Marge, you've got anything else for Greenie? Good. With that, we will call the meeting adjourned.
Hopefully, they haven't any business for that next time. Yeah. It's soon.
You know, if we would have had the one break, you would have had the break, you would have done She was what, nine thirteen, nine nineteen?
Yeah, it was early, it was, yeah.
You do.
We're gonna try, I think we're gonna, we're gonna end up being here every day this week anyhow, so.
Have some meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hate to come back. And Thursday, we got to retire. I don't know, most of them are for Friday, I read something.
You might be, they have, but that'd be nice.